I'd like to call this meeting in the Nevada Community School. Board of Education, November 6th, 2023's meeting to order. I would seek approval of agenda with additions placed before us. Did I get a second or motion and a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as placed before the board tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Have a meeting. Public comment, Brian?
None.
So let us move into our information phase. 4.1, we have a street project that's really going to impact the central elementary.
Pull it up here.
It's 1887 representing that?
No, random number. So this is the information I previously shared with you. It's probably been a couple of weeks now about the spring project, the street project. It's going to be happening around Central Elementary. And scheduled to start in the spring as soon as weather will allow. And the hope is that will be done by the end of the calendar year. So we did have an opportunity, Dave, myself, Chris and I, Travis Temple met with Jordan Cook and two engineers from H.R. Green. Their phases aren't set in stone yet, but it appears as of right now, they're probably starting in this area here. As you probably know, when you go over here, this is in pretty bad shape. This is very low right here, so it retains water. The hope is that this will be built up with a slope. And there'll be some additional water intakes put in here. And so the water will flow that, this way and that way. Instead of pooling like it currently does. And the road's not in very good shape there either. For our sake, probably our biggest concern, obviously while school's going on, is the parent pickup and drop off time. If you've ever been over, at the end of the day, you know that it's a little bit orchestrated sort of chaos, but it works. People enter here, they then go this way, come this way, they pick up their kiddos, and they head out this way. So our biggest concern is that we have to have at least two of those open at all times. So they're aware, they're prepared to accommodate that in their planning, to make sure that we always have two. And then we'll just have to reconfigure. So if this is closed off, we'll probably have to do something a little different in terms of how we plan to go to, how to get some length there. So there'll be some disruption, but I'm sure we'll be able to get it figured out. The plan is probably sometime, it'll be after the first of the year, get some public meetings established, maybe one a little earlier, and then one maybe just proceeding. And of course, we'll be communicating, the city will be communicating so that folks kind of know what's happening, when it's going to happen, and how they can maneuver that. There are also various lines that run across our project underneath that will be, are they even active right now? I don't know.
I've heard both ways. The engineer thinks that they're active, potentially active, so they're going to cap them and abandon them so that it's not a potential hazard on our property, like water lines and stuff. If they ever were to rupture, that's underneath concrete.
So when you raise I and nine, you're going to displace the water, where's it going?
The same direction it's always gone, but it's going to start surface drain, and then it'll go into the storm intakes.
We would also, we've asked, they're going to put, there are storm intakes down here, they're going to put additional storm intakes in. We suggested that they add a storm intake on the corner of our property here as well, which they said would be no problem at all since they're already going to be doing something here. Just a matter of running pipe.
Right. What if the ground's open?
Ten or twenty feet, so. Currently, you know, we've battled, because our green space here is just not big enough to accommodate the number of kids that are on it. We've battled trying to keep that seeded and grass growing, and it's about impossible. But one of the things that we did several years ago, one of the things we felt was is contributing is when we push snow and salt, it all runs off down this way. We put a, put a small little curb here. We added a water intake here that then comes out down here, so that's helped some. But this water intake over here could help us some too. Not necessarily to grow grass, because that's just an ongoing battle. There's just too many people on this, gets too much use. There's not enough green space there, but can't really fix that. So they'll begin to phase this out and shore up their plans, but as of our meeting, this was looking like the starting point here. Get started as soon as weather permits, get as much done when school's out of session as possible, and hopefully the weather cooperates and it's a project that doesn't catch too many snags.
How far on I, does it get all the way to Eighth Street, or is it between Eighth and Ninth as far as?
I don't know any more than the diagram that they provided, honestly. I'm assuming that's as far as they're going right now is what's, what's, what's shown.
What are they shooting for as the end goal timeline wise?
End of the calendar year.
So it's May to December?
That's the hope, that they would be done, it wouldn't linger into 2025.
It's one of the things I've actually brought up quite a few times, that when people come visit our area, one of the things you visit are the schools. And if you're driving past your nice looking Central Elementary going, it's not very attractive to people at all.
I've often taught the same thing, but on the other hand, I was, I would have the competing thought that, well, we don't have speed bumps, but that kind of access speed bumps, you know? It does, I think, help people be a little more careful and slower there, but yeah, absolutely.
Hope you get a dry year, hope all your contractors do what they say?
Yeah.
And, you know, that's, yeah. And we both have the same fingers crossed.
I told them they got to keep two, I told them, at all times.
Yeah. It really does bottleneck even when everything's working. We've all seen it.
Knock on wood that utilities don't get disrupted?
Most of the electric comes in kind of from the corner of Ninth and I there. Power pole, it's pretty well marked and, you know, hopefully not. They've already done their due diligence, they know where they're at. Supposed to be this coming week, it'll be next week. You know, H.R. Green's going to come take a look at our blueprints and see where all of our storm drains for the roof and everything comes off, and make sure we haven't missed anything, and just hopefully to prevent that. Our fiber optic cable is well outside of their scope of work, so we're good there.
Things wear out, you going to fix them? Anybody else got any questions? We're lucky to have a councilman on the witness tonight, give us a little bit of perspective that way. Well, hearing that, why don't we move into our action agenda? We have a best part quote for weeks of new overhead doors, so I imagine we'll hear from both of you on this one.
Probably just me.
Okay. I might ask Dave a question though.
Sure. So what we're proposing tonight is to put a 18-foot wide door in our wash bay that currently goes into our cold parking area for the buses. With our increased size of buses that we've been buying to help alleviate the overcrowdedness, which still, we're still a little bit crowded on a lot of our buses, we have to buy the bigger buses. And in order to fit the bigger buses into the barn, we have to move the buses that used to nose up to one another inside the barn outside. So I'm sure you guys have noticed how many buses we have outside currently, which has increased over the last, you know, three, four years quite a bit because of the bigger buses that we're buying. Dave and I have kind of measured out quite a few times, I've actually gone out multiple times after Dave and I measured it out, and just to make sure what we're thinking in our heads will actually work inside there. And we're pretty confident that we can get four buses parked lengthwise going out the north side of the bus barn where we put that gravel pad. North side between our building and the old mosaic building. So that'd be an 18-foot wide door there, we should be able to get buses in and out through there, and then also the other 18-foot wide door in the wash bay area to help alleviate trying to back in, just to be able to pull in and park some buses inside lengthwise. And with that, if we're doing our correct calculations, we should also be able to park quite a few vans inside. Not all of them, but maybe like four or five, maybe six at the most inside. That would help alleviate all the buses that we have outside. It won't put them all inside, we'll still need that extra building someday. Be able to get some of them out of the elements, the sunlight, the snow, hail, all that good stuff that just likes to beat up on our buses quite a bit. To be honest with you, when I first brought this up to Dr. Gray, it was a single door, and I think, I think we talked like $15,000 for a single door, and he said, all right, well, go get some quotes. So I talked to Dave about it, and we got some quotes. And to put two doors in, which will make it a lot safer pulling in and out, it's $19,683, something like that change.
So the areas inside the building where these, where the buses and the vans will be parked, what's that area used for now?
Pretty much open right now. We do have one bus that backs in all the way up to the back wall, which, and then in front of it is an open space. I'll have to rearrange some of the buses because we did have that bus parking right up against the door, and it's really tight getting in for the drivers, trying to walk through from the outside in. But there's some losing ground stuff, some stuff that's been donated to the school that's just been sitting there for the last year. We've got whiteboards, cardboard, I think, that have been sitting there since 2020.
We got it home for him.
We have stuff that needs to move, but other than that, it's just open gravel right now because I've had to move the buses out of there in order to be able to park our route buses inside.
Would there be any benefit to put concrete down in place of that, or that gravel?
Instead of doing this?
No, 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 the doors are separate, I'm just saying, you put gravel there on the north side.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there, yeah. If you want to take out gravel for concrete, yeah, absolutely, there's a benefit of doing that. We're not going to sink into the ground, and yeah, it'd be a lot easier if I've got to go out there and climb underneath the bus for something. This will, like I said, it'll bring three buses back inside. I think we got six out there now, so are we down to three out there?
And vans, three buses and/or vans, or what's your?
The vans, if I can get five vans in, that'll leave three vans outside. Two, I'm sorry, one van outside, because two of them will come inside for the winter.
It's not bad at all?
Well, at the bus barn, one van outside, at the high school, one van outside, and at the elementary, one van outside, because they're using them on daily or very frequent basis. Make sure that's clear. At the bus barn, one van outside. That's if I can get the five in there.
So with Ruble, the night house, and with the doors get open? You got to talk now?
Couple months? Didn't ever ask that question, but? Hopefully before the turn of the year.
Excuse me?
I would hope before the turn of the year, but I can't, you know, I can't guarantee that, just because.
Who are you, who?
SIBs.
Who?
Central Iowa Building Systems.
Oh, right. Oh, okay. Yes, I guess I did see that in the packet. It'll be nice if they got them done before it turns winter.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It'd be awesome.
We will have to take out some tiles and maybe do a little bit, I think you're trying to do something, leveling out some of that gravel.
Anybody else have any questions?
The buses that we have out on the north side of the building now is, you know, I noticed there's usually at least one, and sometimes multiple buses, that the doors are wired.
Wind blows them open sometimes.
Really?
Especially ten, that one, it's, I've tried pushing that thing shut. I've got parts in order for that one, fix it so we can lock it again. Haven't been able to lock it just because of the contraption on the inside broke, and just a fun time fixing it, that one's just a...
All right, it, well, that, I mean, that, this would help alleviate that anyway, right? Theoretically. So that we don't have buses with their doors open up?
Yeah, we try to keep them as shut as we can, just sometimes the wind, wind will blow them open, or one of the kids go out there and start it up for me, because once in a while, I'll ask him to say, go start the buses, and they don't shut it, and I forget to go double check.
They're supposed to lock, aren't they?
Uh, not necessarily, no. Especially the older ones, when they get pretty close to retirement, they kind of have a other thing. Like 14 especially, it does not lock, otherwise you got to reach through the driver's window and stretch really far and pull up on the handle. So they don't make the parts that, the part that, long story short, they don't make that part anymore to fix that.
But we don't have a bus that we don't need and or use?
Correct. I've gotten rid of all of our out of service buses that aren't being used anymore. Everything we have, we use either in sub status or out of route.
So if I, if I've got a picture right in my head, if, if we put those, install these two 18-foot doors, essentially then we'll have less room to park buses on the north side, right? I mean, unless you block the door.
No, actually, that door that we're putting is just to, just to the east of where that gravel is. So we'll probably have to get some more, actually, get some more gravel out there. So we can drive out. What do you think, gravel? 500 bucks, 600 bucks?
20 tons, about 550 of number two clean. Give me sound smart, man. No, that's what I paid when we put something out this morning, tell them. Well, if anybody can't think of anything, it is an action item, and I think I can see real merit in doing this, but we'll decide that personally.
Motion to approve the bus barn purchase of the overhead doors. Put a quote, that is on the agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve of action item 5.1, as explained to us by Jason Sampson, our transportation director. And I think they've asked all the questions, or at least given us the all, how they would use it here moving forward, so. I would seek approval, and I would ask them, are we ready down the motion and the, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Appreciate it.
Wish we could do more, we don't have any space to do it. 5.2, we have an H Mac quote.
Okay. It's in your board packet. Proposal two, listing the scope of work there, is to do some additional programming, which they refer to as a load shedding. In other words, we're shedding the load, pretty much delaying the use of the electricity, which is kind of part of that first step that you guys quite a while back now approved, with the whole intent of trying to reduce our utility costs. Through this process, it's, I'm going to have the engineer come and do a formal presentation sometime, but the short version is, is if you have a peak, and that's what, we haven't done this in July yet, we've only recorded it, and we had some computer glitches and whatever on the first phase of this. So we finally got it up and running, and we're recording our utility, and you can see Saturdays, Sundays at night, Mondays, we start using a lot more of what you would expect. This is somewhere between traditionally 11 to 1 o'clock or so, is where we use the most of it. And you'll, you'll see a bump with parabola, but then on the top, they'll see a whole bunch of spikes. Well, from what I understand, Alliance records that as well, but they won't tell you when, what, how, or anything else, that's up to you to figure out. And that's what they refer to as their ratchet charge, because if they're going to have the wire capacity and the ability to produce that much electricity for any 15-minute length of time, they got to plan for that all year long for just you, so they're going to kind of have to charge you for that. So the goal here is to get rid of the massive spikes, bring it down to a manageable level. Well, to get rid of that, we're going to do some load shedding. In other words, one might be the auditorium, you know, does it get used between 11 and 1 o'clock very often? So if we turned off the compressors, still had good airflow and everything else, if there's a small group in there, we could probably turn it off for an hour or two, and you'd never notice it. So if we could delay the use of it to get rid of our, our peaks, or in the gym, we could turn it off for a half an hour, you'd probably never notice, it's such a big space.
You have the ability to take these things offline on those kind of?
That's what the proposal here is. So, and maybe a rooftop unit, or some other areas that we say are the least critical, you know, we wouldn't want to take a classroom down for too long. Smaller group, smaller space, larger group of people, you'd notice it sooner. So we might take them down for, you know, 15 minutes at a time. And with, this is kind of a work in progress, but what you'll see there is, there's a part, a module price, and then there's labor price. The module goes with newer technology, which is at the middle school. It's Tracer SC, if you read through there. That's the newer upgraded software. Ideally, I'd love to be able to come with, you know, another $75,000 request to upgrade all the software at the elementary, but that's not feasible, it's not practical, and it's not cost effective. But what you're looking at here then is, it'd be custom programming for the middle school, which would probably be the least amount of hours because of the module, and it's easier to do with the newer software. The high school has a little bit older software because of the date that we went through that remodel. And the elementary is, if something breaks over there, we're in a world of hurt, because you can't buy parts anymore. We'd have to, there's ways that we can go through and patch it. But with that said, this labor into the software is going to be more, more costly. It's just going to be more hours to do it. So instead of looking at this as an expense, if we're kind of aggressive and we're on target, and based on what the engineers have kind of predicted, we could pay this off or recoup this money in several months after Alliance's ratchet charge, because the ratchet charge haunts you for the next 12 months. I think it's, and he'll explain it more when I get him here to make a formal presentation, but pretty much, you're paying 75% of your maximum peak that you've had for the next 12 months. So if we can get rid of that, not only do we save it on one month, we'll save it every month. Now this, the true savings really won't kick in until about a year after, because those things are going to haunt us through the billing cycles. Okay, so this is kind of more of a long term. We'll see, recoup this money more like in 12 months, but then every month after that, we hope to recoup a certain percentage, a large portion of this every month.
There's no danger of Alliance calculating how they do things, is there? Do they don't know that?
I'm sure there is. You know, we've gone through a couple of different things, like, because we have the windmills, or did have the windmills, we own our own transformers, so if we're to lose one of those, which is unlikely, but we could, you know, that may be 10, $15,000. But on the other side, what is it, Brian, do we save 500 a month? It's not 500 each. I think it's like, we save $500, I think, a month because we own our own transformers, so Alliance doesn't charge us for them. But the other part of that that makes us confusing, or hard, hard on us, is as the electricity comes in, there's one net meter, and then it branches off to the middle school and high school, branches off to Cub Stadium, branches off to the egg shop welding. It's all but on one bill. We had really no way to even take a stab at it until we installed these sensors at the building. We still don't know how much we're using at the egg shop and Cub Stadium, but primarily that gets used early in the morning, and of course, the lights come on late at night at Cub Stadium, so we're, we're not too concerned about that. We're looking more at the daytime, high use times. So this proposal is to do custom programming at three different buildings, so take this and kind of divide, that 9,000 divided by three, heavier on the elementary side, in the attempt to try to load shed or reduce or delay our usage of electricity to prevent those massive spikes.
Do we have an idea right now of how much we spend as a district on electricity?
It's probably in the monthly bills, but to break that out between gas and electric, Brian could probably better answer that, I'd have to go reference my notes. It's one of like 17,000.
So on the walk up to this proposal, are they pointing at places and giving you an idea where they suspect you could do, get your savings at, or is this something you came to them with?
This all started just by having a whole bunch of conversations. And it's like, how do we really save money? How do I even know? Well, we can, for $20,000 you already spent, we can tell you what building and where you're using it and all those things. Say, okay, what's that going to get me, the, what's, what benefit am I going to have from that? So we, we just started answering a bunch of those questions. We've installed it, we got some graphs that were, you know, just data. We're, we're watching that periodically, just seeing what it, what it does. And then we can set some thresholds, and the elementary's on its own, but then we're going to have to take the middle school to high school, sensor on one meter, we're going to have to add them together, come up with a threshold, and say, okay, and I've talked to my, I'm building heads, and then I'll kind of confirm with administration, which of these units are, are the least critical during this time of the day, which things really aren't getting used real heavy? You know, we really can't turn lights off. You know, we can't turn computers off, we can't do those, but we could turn air, or we could, you know, stuff like that off for a short time, and you'd never notice a difference. It might raise one degree, we kick it back on, and we go to a different part of the building. The other thing we could do is program earlier in the day, if we need air conditioning, we super cool it a little bit, and then we let it gradually rise back up, so we don't have the massive spikes. Just be a little bit creative on, we'll actually use more electricity at a cheaper rate.
The last building that I posted with Alliance would have been September, which would be August. The total was 46,380. I'd say maybe 600 of that is gas. 30,660 was high school, middle school combined. Thirty thousand six sixty was high school, middle school combined. Eleven thousand three hundred was elementary. Those three figures, those last two figures being the electric.
So where in the district are these control systems gonna be at?
Where are they gonna be at? In the geothermal pump room is where the main controller currently is at the elementary, and they'll stay there. Anywhere in the building or the district, you could get on it. You know, I can sit in my office, and I can watch what's happening in the high school and middle school. High school has three different, they call them Jaces, or little computers that then talk to a virtual computer to bring all, a third of the building all together. The middle school has the one head end, the Tracer SC, which is the more advanced one in the main electrical room, right by Band and Chorus. But it's just internet, you could really put it anywhere, but that's currently where it's housed.
So as an ongoing service, we were purchasing the ability to monitor it and then be interventive. Is this something that you're not gonna have to follow around? This is gonna be something that you, you can make yourself aware of, but you don't have to be, you're not trying, like, just for, you're not turning off the, the auditorium for two hours?
I am not actively going to do that. Now, we'll, we'll have to have a...
Yeah, that's right, I'm just like, where, does this take you out of having to take?
It'll be, it'll be automated, if that's the question, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, so you don't have to be, you can be out of the district, or you could be doing something else, and this is gonna be taking care of it.
It's proposed to be automated. At a certain threshold, this is gonna happen, and we'll have, like, call it zone one, or small grouping one. We'll have another, at the, and again, my building heads, we've sat down and said, okay, what are the least critical? Let's list them by order. What could we do that nobody's even gonna notice? There are some other things that we could delay, you know? So at this level, this kicks off for, you know, we, we haven't decided yet, we haven't started this process, but it could be half an hour, it could be forty-five minutes. And then we go on to, call it option B, or room B, room C, room... And then if it continues to rise, maybe we do A and B together at the same time. But it'll be interesting to see how much electricity we use in July. We could really shed a lot of usage in July, and nobody's using the classrooms, you know? But we'll also have to have an option where graduation day, yeah, we do not wanna shut down.
The gym?
The gym.
Yeah, please don't.
We'll have to have a disable function.
Yes.
So this technician labor figure on this quote is for kind of optimizing this whole idea, this schematic. Were they then gonna go back and change that? Would there be an additional charge for someone to come back?
Well, there's, the way it's written in here, the last bullet point under the first one is owner training. And one of the other bullet points above there said... I could have priced this two different ways. One, one is just time and materials, and if this just kept on going, the number could have doubled. There had been no top end. This is a pretty big number, okay? But at the end, that's the maximum we're gonna get charged to do this.
So you'll get trained to be able to do some of this on?
We should be able to adjust it somewhat on our own, yes.
So to be clear, we get charged on a rate spike that hits a threshold that causes a price to follow it. So if, for whatever reason, and we're trying to sunset all that stuff, so we get down to the point where we can control how far our, our usage goes up to keep the rate itself down. So we're just trying to do something that mitigates the likelihood it would ever happen again, because then it turns, starts the clock again, right?
Right. Basically, we're just trying to take the top right off the mount. You know, somebody, it looks like somebody's putting a flagpole up there, it's just a great big spike. We're trying to take that off, so, because that is so little electricity.
Yet it has such a high rate attached to it.
Yeah, it's just, and the numbers, you know, last month's electric bill, that's a big number. Should be pretty easy pickin' to get a, pay this back. So the way I look at it, my first reaction was, man, that's a lot of money. How, how can I go work them over to get this price lower?
Would expect no less.
He saw me coming, because I'd dealt with them before. The only way I can look at this and say this is a really good deal is in two months, twelve months away, everybody's gonna make all this money back. And every month after that?
Yeah, even, you know, rough math, if this would save two percent a month on energy costs, it would... And I don't know, two percent sounds pretty small to me. I would hope it would do that, but...
Off, off the record, don't hold me to it, aggressively, they were talking close to five thousand a month between the three buildings. You take that times twelve, there's a teacher.
Yeah, yeah, so even being conservative, that, you know, one or two percent a month, it would pay for itself fairly quickly, and, and then start stacking up some savings.
And I, I, I can't quantify it, I can just kind of take their first, and they're, they're pretty conservative. We can start somewhere, and if we're very comfortable, we can get a little bit more aggressive. If we're starting to affect the academic client, client, the climate, we'll have to back off a little bit.
And these are pebble dollars? So were the overhead doors pebble dollars, Dave?
Yeah.
I doubt that's how that... So, quick math, we've approved one, if we've approved this, what's that relate, leave us on pebble balance?
I'll be getting you, Brian's working on that for us. We've got, I'll be sharing pebble balance, projected pebble balance for the end of the fiscal year, remaining gates bond, remaining middle school bond. Those are important, because we've got some pretty big repair projects coming up.
You mentioned that here in your update.
So, once we, we'll get those numbers here soon, because some of that work, once we prioritize that, Dave's gotta get it scheduled. Some of that, we need to get on the schedule probably yesterday, I imagine. And I know that Dave's talked to some contractors and let them know that we're gonna do something, we just don't know.
Where on the market?
The extent. So that's, that should be happening here very soon.
Well, this is why we levy for these things, and if you have the ability to spend a tax dollar, save tax dollar, makes a lot of sense. And it is an action item.
I'd move to approve the HVAC quote for the load shedding, shed programming in the amount of a thousand eight hundred and fifty.
We have a motion and a second to approve the HVAC quote that was in our packet, and as I was explaining to us tonight. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See what you can do with it. Thank you. How's your mini split working in your press box?
It's really cold lately. It's been cold every time we turned it down to cold, it's been great.
Good to hear. All right, I've been just stopping in to ask you one question, now I found you. All right, five point, five point three. We have some policy reviews here, to go through our wellness policy. And Dr. Gray, would you like to lead us in this?
Just a few minor tweaks on the wellness policy. This is due to, this is in preparation for our, we have our nutrition audit coming up in December, so Doyle's been busy preparing for that. So we needed to review the policy anyway, and they suggested a few minor edits there. There's nothing overly substantive in those changes, but I would bring this back to you for a second reading at the next meeting, so that it's all been reviewed and is in place
I'm surprised that it was six years ago that we revised this, 'cause it seemed like we remember talking about this not that long ago, but apparently, once that long?
No, I, I always look at the dates when we last touched it. And it was, I, I don't remember that, but, yeah.
Once we get through these two, we're gonna start bringing, review an entire series. I've had a little lax in doing that. Typically, we would rotate through those, and it's, it's been a few years, so my plan is to get through all of them by, probably by the end of the fiscal year, sometime in the summer. I'll go through every policy, compare it to current IASB template, and then bring it all to you, one chunk at a time.
Well, approve the first reading of the wellness policy.
Oh.
You have a question?
Okay.
Sorry.
I thought you were gonna do that.
On page eleven, under Public Engagement, do you want that to match the same language that's in, on page ten? The only thing that's different, and so, it's, the first, first part is, there's a process for permitting parents, and the other policy says slash legal guardians. Do you want those to be consistent?
Yeah, I can add that.
That was my only question, if you want to make a motion.
Sure, I'll make that same motion. At the end, you want to second on that?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve our wellness policy, a review with the noted additions. Any further questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Five point four, mandatory policies, and this will be a final reading. Doctor?
Yep, just a reminder, the DE discipline policy is mandatory due to legislati, legislation last spring. The parent and family engagement policy is one that we're not sure why it's not in place, but we discovered it while preparing for the DE desk audit.
In simpler times, you just dealt with the principal. And then your folks. Remember those, that's Brian? I went, you did not use all this paper.
Not using any paper.
Oh, please, I've been through this. I've even got our superintendent, who didn't use it, discovered, eh, it's kinda nice having paper around. And I have done times where everybody was whisking their way through their, you know, trying to get to something, and if you get pulled it up, and I'm sitting here looking at it going like, take your time, I'm already there.
The word's there, we'll find it.
Well, I have my memories, you have yours.
For the parent and family engagement, number four, that annual evaluation.
What page is that?
That is on page twenty.
Thank you.
Annual evaluation of the effectiveness of the policy, what does that look like?
For us, they, they do it, they have the, they have the title annual meeting, and there's, there's several slides they'll go over, how are we doing, what's this look like, that kind of, that's how it gets evaluated annually, is the title night, title night We actually do what's in this policy, we just for some reason didn't formally have it in board policy.
And what's it look like for the families who are not English speakers? What do we provide for them?
We do provide translation, yeah. Typically, be one of our ESL teachers will be there, just like we do for registration, we always have a night available. We also have a couple of paras that help with that from time to time.
So do families, are they just there ahead of time, or do families request that ahead of time, or how?
For registration?
For registration, or for conferences, or?
Yes, typically, our, typically, well, two things. We designate a night where that will be available, so they wouldn't necessarily have to request it. But also, our ESL teachers are usually communicating, they're communicating with those families, and so they know who might need assistance and who, you know, who doesn't.
I know it has been mentioned in the past that some of the ESL teachers or associates feel a heavier load to have to be doing the translating and communicating on top of their traditional duties, but I know that's something we might need to, in the future, talk about more if that population grows.
Yeah.
It's, if we know it's pretty small.
I think it's, it, well, we did increase our FTE for, you know, our English language learners, so that helped, certainly helped. But yeah, we gotta monitor those case loads. You know, we were at one point, oh, FTE, when I came here, eleven years ago, we're
I'll make a motion to approve the final reading. Policies five oh two point one four and five oh five point nine, as it closed in our board packet.
Second.
Motion and second to give a final reading to a mandatory policy of five oh two point one four and five oh five point nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Make you consent agenda.
No.
Have we added one?
Yeah. 5.5 is just the Heartland AEA for their board. There's one candidate that you can vote to approve or not. John Kinley's been on that board for some time. Somebody might know John, he was...
Gilbert's?
Used to be Gilbert Superintendent.
Before Lindsey?
Before Lindsey Beecher, yeah.
Shared superintendent at Southampton.
Right, yeah.
And my high school teacher.
Really?
And then John was also prior, after he retired, he was our RAs on it.
At the Career Center.
He was a wrestling coach in high school, too.
Looking at the populations on this ballot here, do you notice how, you know, I was just wondering where they get that. You know, we're a standalone community, and I don't think we have 8,616 people in the data. Well, it's probably everybody in the country. That's scooping up the district. District, yeah. That was a laugh I said pretty soon. Gilbert took.
Do the AEA board members ever have any sort of outreach to the boards they represent? Curious, if that's ever been a thing in the past, or?
Not that I recall. We would, sometimes we'll get, we, we do meet with the AEA chief, superintendents do. So, but I'd never, I don't recall anything directly from their board. There may be things that the AEA chief indicates needs to go to their board, or he or she would keep us surprised of, but...
I don't know if I need to abstain from voting because I work for the AEA.
I think that would be, your conscience would give you guidance on that one.
Yeah, I won't do that.
And this is an action item?
Yep.
Leanne, you know, we don't...
I move approval of the Heartland AEA, AEA, easy for me to say, board ballot in support of John Kinley.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the candidacy of John Kinley for to be the school representation at the AEA. And all in favor?
Aye.
That's me. Opposed? There you go. Thank you. Brings us to our consent agenda.
I saw an entry in the, the top half of the second page of the bills to Amazon Capital Services for board supplies. Is it talking about school board supplies?
Yeah, I ordered that, it was, I just used that account, it'll be reimbursed. I believe that's the trying to think which purchase, there've been a couple, but I did purchase some sound equipment for the Education Foundation. I'm not sure if it's that one or not. But then the Education Foundation's reimbursing us. I just placed the order for them, I just happened to use the board's account. There was another purchase, I would have to go back and look, that I used the board's account, the board account because it was a district-wide purchase. The other one was though, but I do know the one was for Ed Foundation and they'll reimburse it.
I saw an entry on the P-card list that had some bold font and question marks. Purchase from Staples for office supplies, question mark. And it didn't indicate a receipt.
Which page was that, Joe?
Uh, 30. Sorry, top part of 30. Put the 10th entry down.
Yeah.
And right now, it's what I'm going to say about that one.
Oh, sorry, Joe, the, so one of the let me find the total. Yeah, the purchase that you're speaking to is the sound system for Ed Foundation. The other purchase that I used the board account was for stop the bleed kits. The county's been wanting us to get our employees trained on the stop the bleed. We did that with our certified staff on the teacher work day. And then they're providing some kits, but we needed to purchase some, we're putting them all around, we're putting them in all the AED kits across the district.
So on that Staples charge, we don't know exactly what that is?
We'll check on that tomorrow.
Good enough? Joe?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And your personnel, there's a lot of changes with high school volleyball, is there any schedule change?
Nope, it's just, I think there have been some family changes and things of that nature, and they just decided it was time to step away. One of them's got a new baby in the house, another one's expecting a new baby in the house, and so yeah, we'll be bringing on a new staff for next year.
Little babies sometimes change things, don't they?
Are you sure? They are.
We can always reach out to Abby Stevenson if we're so inclined. We'll see what openings we have for teachers.
We don't know if she's coming back because she just took her team to state, too, so...
No, 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 that's, Bernie's my dentist and I, yeah, I know that Tim Hanson, who's backstory is, yes, I, I, you know, making quiet appeals to get them moved back into the community. And she's clearly a gifted coach, yeah. Yeah, yeah. As Bernie told me on my six-month checkup here, he said, don't, I, I, when we all got done and we were talking about it because we got the time, and he said, no, my wife's on this one. Don't worry about it, Marty, my wife's already done it. We'll see how that works out.
Family legacy to continue there.
She was the longest, you know, when they go through, when they induct them into the Hall of Fame. Been through a lot of those, and she had the longest resume of anybody I have ever sat through. To listen to is just like, how did she do this in four years? I mean, did she go to class? All right, that was consent agenda, and it is an action item.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the additional personnel. Second.
Motion and a consent agenda to approve the, motion and a second to approve our consent agenda with the additions since noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board member comments? Thank you for saying this, huh? I haven't carted around this with me.
I'd like to congratulate these two for the phenomenal job they did Friday, I keep on saying Friday night, Saturday and Sunday. I really, really enjoyed the play on both that, I mean, both the one to four and the one you guys were... I don't know, if I see you in a clown costume, I think, no, no offense, non-taken.
Board member comments?
Yeah, tickets went well, I think we had about 300 pre-sold for the Saturday night show, and I'm not exactly sure for Sunday night, but, or for Sunday afternoon, but I think it was somewhere close to that as well, so it was successful, I would say.
Everyone's super excited to get started on the musical stuff already. Mrs. Niblock and Mrs. Dumbba has already started putting together our audition packet, so I know as soon as those come out, we're all going to be running to the choir room to grab those, so we're all really excited.
Is there not a freshman component to this play?
Yeah, there was, so...
Explain, explain that, we've not done that before.
So we actually have, it's just been like several years since we've done it, I think it was before 2020. But we did a one act and then a full play. The one act was primarily freshmen and then some under, some other underclassmen, like sophomores. And then the full-length play was the upperclassmen and then a couple of sophomores.
I guess the only negative comment about that was that it was just a really long night with a 45-minute play, a 15 intermission, and then a 90-minute play after that, so it just made for a long night, but I think people still enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just had a lot more people go up for drama this year, so we had to bring back the one act in order to just kind of fill in those positions, and we're projected to have a lot of people go up in the school this year, so it's going to be a lot of people on stage, but it'll be good.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
You have the venue to do it, the seats aren't that uncomfortable. You know, they would have sent a lot worse in the Ada schools. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anybody else got any? All right, our next meeting will be November 20th, back here, right before Turkey Day. Can't believe we're that, we're already in November, but here we are. Dr. Gray, this will be a good chance to talk to us about enrollment, how'd we do?
About plus 12.
Okay.
Topper off.
That is a good thing. I guess this is the part where I say we take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Could be quicker than you want to be. Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.